We still have to dial 800, Mike, on this one, or did they take that off?
I can't remember.
Okay, we'll try it. We've got to make a call out today.
Are we ready, Nicole?
Yes, sir, you're live.
Okay. Call the meeting to order. Rise for the pleasure of the meeting. Pleasure to be here.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll open the meeting with public comment on any subject not on the agenda. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I guess we'll go on to the mail. We have a thank you note from the tree board for the donation of $2,000 to the tree board for the work that Pat Plantberg and his assistants do. This is a letter from DEQ for the Four Corners Water and Sewer District in Gallup County. Montana Department of Transportation. This is a letter for the Varsa Allocation Bridge and Road Safety and Accountability Program Field Tax Allocation for $70,429.03. This is a "Local governments must match each $20 requested for distribution with at least $1 of local government budgeted matching funds." That money goes to the road department for specific projects or for the general purpose of use on the roads for the county. Family Medical Clinic, rent payment plus the increase to cover the taxes. Rural Montana Magazine. We have claims, approved claims in the amount of $24,014.96.
I'll make a motion to pay claims in the amount of $24,014.96.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the approved claims in said amount. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That's it for the mail, so we will move on to the decision community development planning Nicole Brown boundary relocation Vanden Aker.
Do you want me to go to the podium?
Please, yes, please.
Do each of you have your copies with you? I didn't make them.
Thank you.
Copy to share, okay. So what this is, is a boundary relocation for the Vanden Aker property north of Townsend, just north of Granville Manor. They state that the purpose is to include the pivot area with the amended tract one. So as you can see on your map here, this more of a north-south dashed line is the old boundary, and they just kind of tipped it to a what would that be? I need to turn it this way. Northwest-southeast direction, as opposed to a north-south boundary.
So the old boundary was basically a section line, is that right? Is that what it's following, the old boundary?
I don't know that it was following a section.
The section line is just a dotted line. The old boundary was the kind of followed around the pivot.
Oh, gotcha. Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Okay, I was reading the old boundary as the dashed, okay.
Okay.
No, it's the it followed along the pivot and then dipped in right in this center area, I think for a pump or something, but
Okay.
So, and the house is there, so they're adding this pivot to the house property.
Okay, okay.
Good thing she's here, to set the record straight.
Lot of lines in this.
They did a they did a boundary location previously then, because Cadastral still shows this as a separate parcel, so that is the old boundary, is how Cadastral shows it.
Yes, that was an old boundary before.
Before this one, okay.
Moved it a few times.
Okay.
All right, so access hasn't changed?
No.
It's still the same?
Still the same access, again, nothing is different there.
I don't have any other questions.
Anyone have any other questions or discussion? Not all accepted a motion, entertaining a motion to approve the Vanden Aker boundary relocation?
I will make a motion to approve the Vanden Aker boundary relocation.
I will second that.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the Vanden Aker boundary relocation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries.
Suppose I should
Thank you.
Any comments on mine? I'm going to give you this before we start the next item. See if you're orienting yourself with this development. This is River Road, north. So it actually lies like this. The B is right here. For reference.
So the next item on the agenda is discussion of the community development planning, Nicole Brown amended protective covenants to River View Estates.
So I'm passing around here a rendition of the final plat of River View Estates Phase A and B. And I'll show you, just to orient yourselves here, so north is this way. The B is right here. Here's River Road.
Okay.
So it's this development of it's two phases, Phase B, Phase A, six lots off of River Road.
So are lots, I mean phases, B1 and B2, are they the only ones developed, or?
Um, no. Currently, A1 is developed. B2 is in the process of being developed. A12 has a shop garage. Vacant, vacant, vacant.
Okay.
Are they are they vacant but sold, or are they just
Correct.
Okay.
And I'll show you on here, I think you're familiar with the area, but the, this is River Road here, north. This is the north arrow there. The B is right here.
Okay.
So only these three lots would ever have access onto River Road. So the reason, are you ready for me to begin? I think we're close enough to time. The reason I'm here to present this to you today, there is a commission required covenant that the subdivision residents wish to amend. In full disclosure, I my husband and I own a lot in Phase A. I believe it's A. A. Phase A of River View Estates. So the commission required covenant stated no access or an access restriction onto River Road. We wish to amend this covenant to state direct access from any lot onto River Road shall be allowed so long as the driveway approach permit is approved by Broadwater County and the lot seeking River Road direct access is directly adjacent to River Road. And what I have here are signed and notarized signatures of every owner in that subdivision. And this is my original copy, so. In each of the signatures, because not all of these lot owners live in Broadwater County, there's there's a few different pages with signatures, but they're all notarized. So as we've been instructed previously, as you remember with Park Town Ranch Estates, in order to amend a commission required covenant, the every lot owner in the development must sign off on the amendment to that covenant prior to you giving your approval to amend. So I'm showing you there that every lot owner has signed their consent.
Can I see this now, Mike? So this is really only going to apply to these phases that are directly along
That's correct.
Along River Road.
Phase B, those three lots.
Yeah.
And they may not choose to use that access either because of topography or location of their dwellings.
So there are other accesses off this interior road here, what you call?
Traffic trail.
Traffic trail?
That's correct.
So I guess, let's go ahead and talk about your addressing. How will that affect your addressing if that is allowed to happen?
I don't know that it will affect it in any negative or positive way. Simply whomever's address or whomever's driveway would come off of Traffic Trail, they would have an address of Traffic Trail. If they have a driveway off of River Road, they would have an address off of River Road.
So there's plenty of room.
Oh, there's plenty of room, yes. Yeah, these are larger parcels.
Numbering system to do that?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, and I think it states in here that they the parcels can't be further subdivided, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So this, the number two, that the lots shall be used for no more than two single family residences with a secondary dwelling, not to exceed 1,500, that's already in these covenants?
No, that's an amendment, but that's not a commission required amendment. That's an amendment that the subdivision residents have the option to amend. And the reason that it's included on here is because we did, as subdivision residents, wish to amend that covenant. The covenant's previously stated that the lot shall be used for single family dwellings only. So instead of making two amendments with two signatures, we chose to make any amendments as subdivision residents that we could at the same time that we are moving forward with the commission required covenants.
So our decision won't include that, is this going to include the direct access to River Road?
That's correct. And all of the amendments you will see highlighted, they're bold. I guess I shouldn't say highlighted, they're in bold.
Are those lots that are now going to be allowed access onto River Road, do they also have access to Travis Trail?
That's correct.
Okay.
It will be landowner preference, serving at the pleasure of the county road supervisor or public works director to ensure that their approach is approved.
Will they be allowed to have two access points or only one?
There would be no restriction on two access points. They would have to choose which one they want their address on. They couldn't have two addresses, that would be unsafe. That's not to say that each of the two dwellings on the parcel couldn't have their own address. So if one chose to use a traffic trail address for one of the structures on the parcel, and another structure chose to use a River Road access, they could do that. I'm speaking in terms of each individual dwelling unit. Even if they did have two accesses, you know, for safety reasons, they would only be able to pick one for their address. And I would encourage them to have a primary and maybe an emergency access or a secondary if they were to do it that way.
So if you had two dwellings on each one of these pieces of property, there could potentially be six addresses on there?
That's correct.
On River Road?
No. No. Well, I'm sorry, I take that back, yes, because if each of those three lots were to have two dwellings, yes, there could be six addresses onto River Road. But that would be six approaches, and I don't know that that would be approved by Public Works. Most likely, they would have a shared driveway if they were to do that. And I'm certain that Josh or the public works director at the time would encourage that, as would I.
I know it's kind of, we've always been cautious of shared driveways, right?
Shared driveways, when there's two, it's it's not not impossible, yes. And when we're doing subdivision developments, typically when we're talking about a shared driveway for two lots, that's when it can get a little tricky, because then you've got the shared easement. When it's one lot, one owner, shared driveway, typically you're not going to see that conflict. The conflict arises when you have two separate landowners. And in this instance, it will be one landowner with that driveway sharing to each of the dwellings that are owned by them on their parcel. Does that answer your question?
All right, so I guess, as I'm trying to get this straight in my head, if they were to build two dwellings on this, they would have to be owned by the same landowner?
Um, the land would be owned. The homes could be, if you think of it like a condo, like a condominium type of situation. And I don't mean that as in multiple dwelling units, but as in the structure is owned by one person, but the land is owned by the original landowner, who owns the main building. Because you couldn't own the land. But you could have someone else own the house if they had the means to do so.
Without owning the property?
Mm-hmm. A good way to look at this, these are frequently called mother-in-law homes. And I think you're all probably familiar with that, to where, you know, the parents want to live closer to, or the aging parents live closer to the adult children. So in that instance, you know, we wouldn't get into the business of saying who owns the secondary dwelling unit, who paid for the structure to be constructed. But it would be one tax bill, because the taxes are associated with the tract land.
In number six, you have highlight, not highlighted, but in bold, primary dwellings, is that a change?
That is a change. Previously, that stated all dwellings will have a minimum of 1,500, but since we are amending the covenants to allow for a secondary dwelling, we don't want to force that secondary dwelling to have to be 1,500. The only requirement is that we're asking that that secondary dwelling unit be less than 1,500. Or I believe it states 1,500 or less. I think 1,500 is the max. But we didn't want to create that as the minimum, to make that be the only possibility. Is there something popping up on there? And Officer Lewis and Officer Wood are also subdivision residents, and they're here today too, if you have questions. Not to put you on the spot.
Is there any further discussion?
No, I think I will question any
Any public comment?
Are you done with my copy, or are you still looking at it?
This one? Okay. You want that back?
If you're done with it.
Yes. So is there a motion to approve the amended protective covenants for River View Estates Phase A and B?
I think this is it's only on our agenda as a discussion.
Oh, it's, okay.
So, we'll have to put it on for a decision.
For approval?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want these back then, Nicole?
I do. So you can't make a decision on this today?
No.
Did you have questions of any of these gentlemen before, just?
No.
Okay.
I don't. Does anybody else have any question for?
So when can this be back on, on Monday, right? We're still within the timeframe, okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion community development planning, Nicole Brown, county advisory board appointments.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. So each of you have this document here in front of you?
We do, yeah.
We went over last week the commissioner appointments, so that has been solidified. I'm sorry, the commissioner liaison, I shouldn't call them appointments. Commissioner liaison to the board. I'm just going to go over these for the public's benefit. The airport board has one vacancy.
I'm looking on the list for the airport board.
Okay.
Who, oh, it's Brian Carroll.
That's correct. And he has moved out of the county.
Okay. All right, perfect.
Okay, so the airport board has one vacancy, no applicants. The trust board has two vacancies, and I have two applicants. Returning member Steve McCullough and returning member Al Christopherson. And I read through these letters at the last meeting, do you want me to do that again? Or is that satisfactory? Okay. The compensation board has one vacancy, zero applicants. The tax appeal board has one vacancy and one applicant, Jeff Longlinay, who is a returning member. The fair board has one vacancy. And do you want me to pause after each of these? I should have asked that in the beginning. Is it okay if I read through the list?
Yeah.
In its entirety, okay. Fair board has one vacancy and one applicant, Val Hornsfield, who is a returning member. The Townsend area mosquito board has one vacancy, no applicants. The Three Forks area mosquito board has three vacancies and zero applicants. The historical society board has five vacancies and four applicants. Each of these applicants are returning members, Sharon Reagan, Terry Love, Victor Sample, and Ross Johnson. The planning board has five vacancies and two applicants, Trinity Vanden Aker and Mary Heineman. The TV district board has three vacancies and zero applicants. The weed board has three vacancies and four applicants. Those applicants are John Farrett, returning member, Gord Pierce, new applicant, Todd Kiddo, new applicant, and Weston Muns, new applicant. The Parks and Recreation Board has three vacancies and zero applicants. The solid waste board has three vacancies and one applicant, Daniel Davis, who is a returning member.
I have a question.
Yes.
The planning board?
Mm-hmm.
On this other sheet that I have, Herb and Jenny, their terms don't expire until '21, right?
That is correct. And on this sheet, I guess I should, thank you for pointing that out, the planning board, we have been operating as a two, three, five-member board. We are happy to have five members. Our bylaws state that we can have up to Our bylaws state that we can have up to seven members, which is why I have, it does not reflect that on the sheet. Thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner. Just so that the public and you are aware, we do have the ability to have that many applicants should they choose to apply. But I'd be happy with five even. Was that, was that answering your question?
Yes, absolutely.
Is the health board not listed because it's, it's full?
It's fully staffed.
Okay.
And there's a comment on here from Sheriff Meehan, wanted to know which position on the compensation board is available. I just want to clarify that there is one citizen member position available. Last week, I received an email from Sheriff Meehan requesting that Reese. Oh, why can't I think of his first name? Weed board.
Peter?
Peter, thank you, wow. That he, he will be the sheriff's appointee on the compensation board. And so the way that process works, the sheriff has the latitude and the ability to appoint a person without it coming through this board. So I just want to clarify that the sheriff did appoint Peter Reese as his representative on the compensation board. So that is not the vacancy. So hopefully that answers your question. But we do have one citizen member position available.
So you have, you have four people on the planning board right now?
Currently, I have three.
With Trinity and Mary, you'd have four.
Then I would have five.
There's still three.
Well, yes, you're right, then I would have four. So currently, I have Jenny Schaber, Herb Argabright, and Dennis Miller. Dennis Miller's term expired December 31st of 2020, and I've not received a letter of interest from him yet.
Okay.
So yes, you're right, it would be four.
Who, who's, who's, who's terms have expired on the solid waste board? Just not returning?
Frank Davis and John Williams. I have not received a letter of interest from either of them.
And then the TV district board, we have no applicants for that. The commissioners have to, have to do that.
That is correct. And the same with the mosquito boards.
Okay, we haven't heard nothing from Tom?
No, I have not. No, I emailed him, and I also emailed Jessica Bushnell as the manager of that board. But I emailed Tom directly. And have not heard from either of them.
So would the commissioners have to fill the Three Forks area mosquito board also?
Typically, it's been the commissioner whomever's district that lies in to fill that need. But I, I don't know if that's the practice or policy. Because that is the only board that's district-specific.
So do we have, do we have any, do we just have Daryl on the Three Forks mosquito district then?
Yes, yeah. I have, I have no contact information for Mr. Phyllis, who was the previous member. I don't have a phone or email.
That's something we do need to work on here, I guess. And Jessica Bushnell did mention something to us about that. When we get closer into the mosquito season. So.
Okay. Does Jessica serve on the town or weed board, or mosquito board?
I don't believe she serves. I believe she's considered the manager. I have a comment from Al Christopherson inquiring as to whose terms on the rec board are expiring. I believe I can answer that. If you'd like me to. Currently, Suzie Hamilton, Stacy Summer, and Adam Six have expiring terms on the rec board.
And you've not received letters from them?
I have not, and I emailed each of them.
How about our non-voting members on the, on the trust board? We need to?
We currently don't solicit for that.
Okay, they just?
If someone is interested, and this is, this is, again, this has been past practice. If someone is interested in, in serving in a non-voting capacity, they simply write a letter and request it, and then they bring it to the commission.
And how many non-voting members do you have right now?
Currently, two.
Two, that's fine.
And really, in all legality and actuality, just the one, since one term expired December 31st of 2020.
So it's showing on the compensation board, you have an open, you have an opening for a, just an open citizen?
That is correct.
Appointed by any elected official?
That is correct.
All right. Any ready for nominations?
Yes.
Or appointments, I guess? I guess we'll just, we'll just start with the trust board. I guess I would nominate Steve McCullough and Al Christopherson for three-year terms.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded to approve Steve McCullough and Al Christopherson as members of the trust board. Any further discussion?
I'm going to sit over here, if that's okay. I'm sorry, just so I can see if there's comments that pop up while you're making the motions.
There is, there is further discussion online here. Whenever you're ready, I'm sorry to be disruptive. So I have a comment from Al. He says, how and when were the vacancies advertised to the public? So I can answer that, that they were sent out to the BCDC listserv. They were posted on our county website, word of mouth, and then this has been an ongoing discussion at the commission meetings on these vacancies.
Okay. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Next one would be the tax appeals board.
I would move to accept Jeff Langley's as a member of the tax appeal board.
Can I have a little second?
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Jeff Langley's application for the tax appeals board. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same? Motion carries. Uh, next is the fair board, Val Hornsfield, returning.
Is that for a three-year term for Jeff? Are those three-year terms?
All, all terms will be three years from this point on. Yes.
Okay. I will make a motion to appoint Val Hornsfield as a returning member to the fair board.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Val Hornsfield for the fair board. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same? Motion carries. The next one is the historical society board, five members, Sharon Reagan returning, Terry Love returning, Victor Sample returning, Ross Johnson returning.
I would move to accept Sharon Reagan, Terry Love, Victor Sample, and Ross Johnson to return to the historical society board members.
Hold a second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Sharon Reagan, Terry Love, Victor Sample, and Ross Johnson to the historical society board. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Planning board, Trinity Vandennaker and Mary Heineman.
I would move to appoint Mary Heineman and Trinity Vandennaker to the planning board.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Trinity Vandennaker and Mary Heineman as members of the planning board. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Weed board, three vacancies, four applicants. The applicants are John Farrett, Gordon Pease, Todd Kiddo, and Weston Muns.
I guess I would suggest Gord Pierce and Todd Kiddo.
Is there a second?
I would second Gord Pierce and Todd Kiddo.
Motion's been made, seconded to approve Gord Pierce and Todd Kiddo in all discussion. Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same? Motion carries. So with the weed board, we still have a vacancy with two other applicants. Parks and Recreation, we have no applicants. Solid Waste Board, three positions, Daniel Davis returning, so we have two vacancies. Is there a motion to approve Daniel Davis for the solid waste board?
I would move to approve Daniel Davis to the solid waste board.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approving Daniel Davis for the solid waste board? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Okay, so all these people that have been approved, thank you for volunteering your time, taking, participating in the, in the processes for these boards.
Yeah, I, I think sometimes that maybe folks forget how important it is for these advisory boards to advise the commission. And we do appreciate, like Mike said, the, the time they spend away from their families and, and helping their community and the commission do that. So thank you very much.
And for these vacancies, McCullough, if I'm correct, as the year goes on, anybody can apply?
Absolutely.
This is not closed.
Absolutely. And I will send out more notifications. I'll update it to the county website. You know, yeah, this is always an ongoing process. This just happens to be at the beginning of every year when we gather all of it and try to fill as many of these holes as we possibly can.
So are all these appointments for three years then, Nicole?
That is correct, yeah. We've now hit a good spot of staggered terms to where we can do three years for every member from here on out. And that doesn't mean that if something comes up, you know, in, in individuals' life, that they can't step down within that three years. And likewise, for the commission to ask them to step down if it becomes necessary. So I will probably be bringing this back to you in a few weeks as I'm going to be optimistic that I will get more interest. And in the meantime, do you want to just wait on this weed board appointment? Of the third?
Let's see, so on the weed board, we only had two vacancies, right?
You had three vacancies, four applicants.
Right.
Have you got on any of these? I should have asked this earlier, I apologize. Did you get any feedback from any of these boards themselves about the people that have put their names in?
Um, no, no, I have not.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a decision to approve the journal entries. Journal entry adjustments are from 6/20 to 12/20.
I guess it's important for everybody to know that all those journal entries are in our office stack about this high. If anybody is interested to come over and look through them, they're more than welcome. And I would make a motion to approve the journal entries.
I would second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve journal entries from 6/20 to 12/20. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Okay, department updates, environmental health, sanitaryian Sean Rowan, and public health Theresa Munson.
I guess Sean is going to call in on, by phone today, and we're, we're a little behind schedule, so I hope that he's still available. As your chairman, I'd suggest it, since Theresa's here, we let her go so she can get back to work. I know she's doggone busy over there.
That's the understatement. Okay, so I'll start off with a few statistics. Currently, there are 89,584 cases of COVID in Montana. Montana averages about 404 cases a day. There's been 1,093 deaths due to COVID. Broadwater County has a total of 341 cases, with four of those resulting in death. We average about 20 cases a week. Our current caseload today is 31. We've had 319 people who have recovered in Broadwater County. So we're currently finishing with Phase 1A. As you all know, probably that was healthcare. As you all know, probably that was, um, healthcare, frontline healthcare workers and residents of long-term care facilities. We were just made aware that Silver Springs is going to get their vaccine from Walgreens Pharmacy on January twenty-second. And Serenity is scheduled for February second. Which didn't make a lot of sense to me, um, but that's what the information I got said. The hospital residents, um, they're still working on getting information from the POAs to see if they, um, are going to vaccinate particular residents or not. So, um, we're finishing with One A today. This week, the state is, uh, rolling out One B. Unfortunately, there was an error, um, on the state's part. We were supposed to get a hundred doses. I just found out this morning that that was allocated to the hospital, um, supposed to be allocated to us. So they're working on that right now. We currently have about three hundred and fifty people just for Phase One B on a list. So without starting with that one hundred doses, it's, it's gonna be madness. Our phone rings about every two to three minutes, and our staff just can't keep up with the phone. So, um, you know, we're doing the, the best we can. I'm gonna put something in the paper because people are calling now two and three times. See if they're still on the list, to see if we know anything. Unfortunately, what happens is, um, yesterday, I got the email that said, you know, all the allotments in the state. We only got six thousand doses for the whole state. So when it comes to our small county, you know, we're, we're just not gonna get that money. And with Lewis and Clark, you know, advertising theirs on TV and stuff like that, you know, people are seeing that and they're, you know, wondering why we're not starting. We're not starting because we don't have the vaccine. And so anybody listening, I would just beg you, encourage you not to call the Health Department two or three times. We have your name on the list. And as soon as, as soon as we can start rolling out that vaccine, we're gonna do everything we can to start running through people and getting them done as soon as we can. So, um, Governor Gianforte, um, changed the, what was the phases before? It was age seventy-five, which went down to age seventy. And according to the information that I got from the state, we're going to have about half of the vaccine we need for Phase One B because of that change. So it's, it's not gonna get better. It's probably gonna get worse before it gets better. Hopefully, you know, the vaccine companies will start to catch up and, um, we'll be getting more vaccine rolled out. One, one piece of good news is, is that Montana ranks between eighth and ninth in the United States for One A rollout in number of doses given. So, um, it just means that, you know, we got the vaccine and we gave the vaccine. And so that's, that's a pretty good place to be. So, um, there really isn't anything else I have. If anyone didn't see the new phases, um, we do have a copy of those at the Health Department. They went out to most, most of the community leaders. So Phase One B is persons seventy years and older, American Indians and other people of color who may be elevated for a risk of COVID-19 complications. And persons sixteen to sixty-nine with high-risk medical conditions. And those are specifically listed, and we are to follow that list. And there's, there's quite a few, I won't go into that. Once Phase B is done, we'll start with Phase C. And that is other frontline essential workers. So, um, that's when we'll start doing teachers and, um, other folks like that. Persons sixty years and older, um, people residing in congregate care or correctional facilities. And, um, people sixteen to fifty-nine with medical conditions that weren't included in Phase One B. And those conditions are also listed. So then we come to Phase Two, um, and that is pretty much everybody else who is remaining, who is sixteen years and older. We're currently giving the Moderna vaccine because we don't have the storage for, um, for the Pfizer vaccine. We started giving vaccines on December twenty-fourth. And so, um, this week, on the twenty-first, we will start, um, giving second vaccines to those people who started, um, in December. And it's, uh, twenty-eight days between shots. So, that's about all I have.
Right. So I, I know that we, you know, recently hired someone to answer phones and do scheduling for you. I mean, does that, that helps?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yeah, it helps. You know, we initially, um, only hired her two days a week. And still Diane has not been able to put her hands on the billing. Number one, because of training, and number two, because, you know, we're giving shots on those days. And so Diane has a huge responsibility. When we give the shots, um, she takes their temperature, does all their registration. She has to fill out the little card that you see, um, that everybody has. All the information has to be logged in, um, within twenty-four hours into the state. And then daily, um, we have to send a report to the CDC. So she actually got, um, a couple more really important things added to her, um, job duties. So, you know, we al, we almost need somebody to answer the phone five days a week. But, um, so we're trying to work it out. We, um, had one nurse quit, so right now, um, it's just myself and I have a halftime LPN, Kami Simons, who is also, um, doing the best she can. She's also doing our contact tracing. So she's got her plate pretty full, too. So, um, just the three of us are doing COVID investigations and contact tracing. And so we're just super short-staffed. It's almost impossible to get everything done, so. But we're doing the best we can, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you, Teresa.
If you try calling Sean.
Okay. Doug, it's on Environmental World Headquarters, how can I help you?
Hey, Sean. Sorry, uh, we're running behind, but, uh, thank you for taking time to, uh...
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us okay?
Sorry, uh, we're running behind, but, uh...
Well.
Okay, so you guys are...
You have...
Can I hear you, though?
Yeah, do you have the video on in the background?
You can hear you on it.
Yeah, do you, do you have the video on in the background? I can hear, uh...
I think the phone is muted. There you go, now it's green.
There we go.
All right. All right. How's that? That better?
That's better, yeah.
Okay, there you go, thanks. All right, Sean, thank you for taking time to give us an update. Sorry that you couldn't be here.
Yeah, sorry about that, and thanks for your patience on that. Hopefully, we'll hear something back soon.
Okay.
So, um, I, I think the purpose of this meeting was to kind of discuss where things are in terms of, of the department that I'm kind of overseeing. And, you know, what our department, or what this department does is very multifaceted. We do the license establishments, we do drain field permits and, and site evaluations. And of course, we've been dealing a lot with the COVID-19 stuff in the last, you know, eleven months. I, I'd like to kind of talk a little about the drain field permitting process that we have first. And so last year in 2020, we issued a hundred and forty-eight permits throughout the county. And that was up from, I believe, a hundred and one permits from last year. So almost a fifty percent increase in, um, in permits. I did a quick, um, look at the permits. I was, I, I was not able to get into the access, you know, um, program that I have, so I had to do it by hand. So, you know, there's definitely more human error involved. But it looks like there were, we issued about sixty-three permits down in the, the Wheat, Montana area, southern, the southern part of the county, which would be about forty-two percent of the permits. I, I thought that was actually lower than what I was expecting, or it is lower than what I was expecting. I think, um, as I was going through it, I realized that there's a lot of permits that were issued in the silos and, um, kind of that just north of Townsend area as well. So I'll, I'll try to get some numbers that I can send off to you guys that, that show that once I can get into the access database to kind of do that query. But, um, so, you know, I, I think it's not a big surprise that the Wheat, Montana area is the fastest, most likely the fastest area, growing area. But also, it looks like there's a big part of it that's just north of Townsend as well. So that's probably, um, not too surprising either. So far this year, in two thousand twenty-one, we have, I've already issued twelve permits. Ten of those permits are down in the, the southern part of the county, so. And those are all going to developers. So they came in at the beginning of the year with four permits for one developer and six for another, or something like that. So, you know, building spec homes down there is what I, we're seeing. So that's the, the drain field permit, um, portion of, of what I do. And, you know, I spend a lot of my time doing the, um, the inspections of those drain fields. So I'd say, uh, when I come down, half of my time every trip is to go do an inspection. And I, I try to go to every single drain field and look at every drain field that's installed, even if it's installed by a certified installer. Um, I feel like it's important that, that we, um, that we look at these things and make sure that they're put in the right spot, that they're put in properly, that type of thing. So, um, that's been a big emphasis. Part of the shift that I'm going to have to have this year, though, is to get back into the food side of things for the licensed establishment. So that's, um, you know, that portion of, of the office was definitely not as... The, the actual inspections was not as rigorous last year in terms of me going out and meeting and doing inspections, filling out inspection forms. Of course, I was very busy with most of the establishment, starting in March through now, you know, working with them with the COVID-19 related issues and just, um, in communication with how to sanitize and that type of thing during this, um, during the pandemic. So it's not like we haven't, the, our office has not had contact with those licensed establishments, but it's been a much different emphasis. And, um, I think from our office's standpoint, we need to get back out and make sure that, that the establishments are following, you know, safe food handling now, because we've been so focused on the COVID-19 that it's easy for them to, to let other things slip now. So it'll be important for me to get it back out. Plus, most of these people I've built a relationship with and have, um, that ongoing relationship to build and work on as we try to make their establishment safer and better for, for our community, so. One of the other areas that I'm exploring of expanding, um, the office, a part of the work that I would do is, um, reviewing some of the subdivision work that DEQ is currently doing. So there's a contract that we can do through the, through the Montana Department of Environmental Quality that allows us to do some of the reviews of, say, a family transfer. You know, it's a ten-acre parcel, split into two fives. Right now, I go out and meet with the contractor or the site evaluator, you know, typically someone like J.J. Connor. And I look at the soils and make sure that the site looks good. And the state, I think, pays us twenty-five dollars every time we go up there. Well, um, I also have to write a letter to the state saying that the site appears to meet all the requirements. So by the time I get that done, it, you know, I've already been to the site. A lot of times, Nicole and I have already talked about the project, um, that type of thing. And so I feel like there's, um, the subdivision program has, uh, has higher fees that we could be receiving, and it would be a good use of my time to, um, add that to the pro, to what I do because I'm already basically doing that work. You know, reviewing it and commenting on it. So what it also means is that when someone drills a well in the wrong spot, but it's a location that, that is not in the drain field or in the mixing zone, or something that can be approved, I can do that as a paperwork, quick paperwork shuffle, and, um, they don't have to send it straight to DEQ. So it's something that, that, um, I think would benefit our community. In bigger projects that would be maybe too time-consuming for me, I can just continue to pass those through to DEQ. The, the contract would allow us to do that, so. And then I, I guess the, the office itself, in terms of, of, um, how we're, we're doing, I think, other than the, a few of these little COVID blips, you know, having admin help out and then me maybe not being there today or tomorrow is, is always difficult. But, um, I think that we can, um, I think having a full-time admin help is beneficial to my office and to, hopefully, to Nicole's office as well. And, um, having the contractors, or the contractors do like having someone there that they can call and know that they're going to be able to reach out to me or know, someone that knows my schedule. So, um, I think that that's working out well. And my, my intention, and I, Darrell, you and I have talked about me trying to figure out if I, um, where I'm gonna go in terms of time commitment and/or maybe even a commitment to the county itself. Um, I think what I'm, I'm tending to think is that I'll go to just working three days a week for the county. That'll be on, as a, as a contractor, if that still works for you guys. So I'm thinking two days, or what I'm thinking is I'll try to do one day in the office where I don't do any inspections other than maybe some licensed establishments like food and trailer parks and that type of thing. Try to focus on that. It's a different mindset when you have to go do a food inspection versus doing a, um, a drain field inspection. a drain field inspection where you're talking to contractors versus a bar owner or so. I have a hard time shifting mentally from doing that. I try to separate those days, so.
Okay.
You guys have any questions for me on things?
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
Uh, those days that you're planning on being in the office, Sean, just I guess for everybody's benefit, what are, what are those days for that date?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that I would try to do, I, I need to be there early in the week and late in the week for sure for the drain fields because the contractors usually want something done, um, you know, they'll either work over the weekend and be ready or they'll, uh... So I'm thinking it'll probably be in Mondays and Tuesdays and Fridays is my, my thought. But that Fri- Friday could turn to Thursday as well, but... And, you know, what I typically done is if I get a bunch of calls for somebody, uh, contractors say, "Hey, we're all gonna be, we're gonna be done on Wednesday." "Oh, we're gonna be done on Wednesday." I just shift my schedule to meet that, um, so I can get... Because my goal is to keep the contractors moving and, um, you know, to, so they can make their money and they're not waiting on me, so.
Sure, okay. All right. Anything online, Nicole?
No, sir.
No?
So we will have our Board of Health meeting tomorrow as well. And, um, you know, I'll probably bring up some of these statistics one more time just because the board may be interested in hearing a few of those. Um, I, but hopefully I'll be there. I mean, by one o'clock, I hope I know what, um, the tests come back. And like I said, um, Bella's contact is very minimal, but I feel like I have to set the example stricter than a lot of people, so that's part of why I'm not there today, so.
Understand that. How about, uh, what do we have, uh, on, for event requests? Is there anything other than, uh, what was the, what was the last one?
Well, so...
FAA, was it?
So the last, the, yeah, the, but now with, you know, the, the governor's removal of the directive, there's no limit on how many people can get together.
Right. Okay.
And so, um, I, I, I haven't received anyone, you know, no one has called to ask, but that was, that's something that we need to talk about tomorrow at the Board of Health meeting is if we're still expecting, um, or if we can, you know, do we want to be talking to people about their projects or are there events to be? Or is it just now we're gonna be following the directive?
Okay. All right, I don't have anything else.
Anything else?
Thank you, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, you guys. Have a good day. All right, take care. Bye-bye.
Bye. Oh, there it goes.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is discussion and decision resolution to declare surplus properties.
Mike, you wanna give us a brief on that?
Sure. And we have two pieces of property by the county that we want a surplus down to the state surplus. So what they do is they, they go down there and anybody within county or state or governmental wanna purchase the property, they can. And then in April, they have the lo- the auction for the public. Um, one's the van for the airport, GMC van, and I'm not even sure runs. Um, and then we have a, a junk vehicle trailer, the original one, but doesn't meet the needs for junk vehicle. So we need to remove it so we can get our money back and, uh, move on.
Okay. And the, uh, I guess, uh, the funds from these will be, go back to the departments where...
That's correct.
The fund that they originated from, right?
Yeah, junk vehicle has to go back to junk vehicle. I'm sure airport does too.
Any airport as well, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I guess, do you guys have any other questions? I don't.
Is there anything else you can get rid of or...
Uh, I don't know of anything else unless Road Department has anything.
I think at some point we probably will, but...
Yeah.
I think that's about the only other two departments would be, uh, solid waste and roads might have something to go down there. It's a, it's a nice way to do it without us having to hold the auction, let the state hold the auction.
Yeah. Well, and this, this actually is in line with what statute calls us for us to do, so. It has to be done by resolution. Do you have the resolution there, Mike?
Yeah.
So...
Do you wanna read that, Mike? You can do that.
Uh, Resolution 2021, a resolution declaring county property, surplus property. Whereas Section 782221 MCA authorized the Board of County Commissioners to sell, trade, or exchange any real or personal property, however acquired, belonging to the county that is not necessary to the conduct of county business or the preservation of its property. And whereas the county property described in the attached list Exhibit A, which is the van and the trailer, has been determined by the Ca- Board of County Commissioners to be unnecessary to the conduct of county business or the preservation of its property and by such determination that has been declared surplus property. And whereas the property on Exhibit A individually have a value less than five thousand dollars and now therefore it be resolved by the Ca- Broadwater County Commission that said county property is declared surplus property and can be taken off the inventory.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt, uh, this resolution declaring county, uh, surplus property of the van and the junk vehicle trailer listed on Exhibit A.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Motion has been made to second it to approve the resolution declaring county property surplus and attached in Exhibit A. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pairs same? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome. You wanna take these with you, Mike? I'll, I'll, um, Commissioner Delger signed them. Down there.
Yeah, those ones, all the copies, you can both, give those to them. State surplus. I'm sure those have to go to Ann.
They do, yeah. We'll, we'll give Ann this pile and...
Okay.
She can... You want us to just give them to Ann and then give them back from her or how do you want to do it?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay.
And then she'll have the original and I can take copies of them.
Okay, we'll do that.
All right, thank you.
I have online comment whenever you're ready. Not pertaining to this, I don't believe, but stand by just a second.
You can go ahead with the online comment.
Okay, this is from Sheriff Meham. He asked if the commissioners had received his email on the DTFMOU.
I read that this morning.
We haven't looked, I haven't looked at it yet.
I guess I haven't looked at it either.
Look at something for next week's...
But it will be, we can put it, it will be on the agenda next week.
He says, "Thank you."
Any other business or discussion?
Want to sign that?
I guess the only other comment I have is that the, uh, Clerk and Recorder's Office is shut down due to staff shortages due to a COVID incident. Uh, as soon as we can get somebody back in the office, we will. Hopefully we at least get somebody in there to answer phones. And I would assume businesses will probably have to, or business will have to be conducted on a, uh, appointment schedule until we can get people back to work. So we're due, we're short-staffed, so unfortunately that's the way that goes. Hopefully we can get somebody back in there by tomorrow, but we don't know yet because they haven't been able to get tested. Other than that, does anybody else have anything? Seeing none, we will adjourn at eleven twenty-five.
All right.